Ray and Dave, as a sign of our appreciation, a small token, I really wasn't kidding about coming back. We decided to get you an Aunt gift card for downtown, so on those nights you come to a meeting, you can stop and have some dinner beforehand.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alex. Thank you. Thank you, Alex.
We're out of here.
Well done.
Thank you.
Now we get to see the back of your head.
In the meantime, but we're gonna move on forward before we bring in incoming council members. And the next part of the agenda will be for us to do a swearing ceremony. So those of us who became council members, every year we're gonna be swearing and we're eventually gonna elect a president and a vice president from among ourselves. So the first one to get sworn in is happening to be me because my name is Guridi. So we do it like that directly. So I'm gonna, I asked George Kelly back to to swear in. And I think you can, you can tell how we do it last time. Do I go here or should I just go over there?
Come on down here.
I go down. Yes. And come down. And before we start, I'm just gonna ask my family who is here and my two sons, Jeremy and Julian, and my wife to stand here with me. And I'm gonna, we don't have a Bible.
You're affirming today, so.
Yeah, so we've been affirmed. So they're staying by me. Help me out and put up with me.
How that would work legally? I'm not sure how that would work legally. Put your hand on the smartphone with the Bible in.
Arguably, always be cared.
Hey, you always count Courtney Robinson. Thank you very much.
Oh, there we go.
We got the little one holding the Bible. We gotta go on this side. We gotta raise my right hand.
Are you ready?
I am also, I also got my jacket so I can be home.
All right, please repeat after me. I Julio Aguridi
I Julio Aguridi
do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear
that I will support, obey, and defend
That I will support, obey, and defend
the Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of this Commonwealth
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth
and that I will discharge the duties
That I will discharge the duties
of my office of councilperson
Of my office of councilperson
of the city of Allentown, Pennsylvania
Of the city of Allentown, Pennsylvania
with fidelity.
With fidelity. Thank you very much. And now that I've confirmed, thank you very much, all of you, for coming. We'll see if we're in vice, but we leave that for later. So the next person to be confirmed will be our in-house previous vice president, Darrell Hendricks. Confirmed by Judge District Magistrate David House Jr. He's, uh, rolling through, that's all. Thank you more fish.
Santa Claus.
Well, if I was the previous honorable Judge Danek, I wouldn't wear my.
I want to say, you know, one other thing going on, I didn't wanna say that.
You don't have to say it, everybody knows.
Hendricks' family, you wanna stand?
Yeah, Jeremy. Chris, come up for us.
Father, there you go. Jeremy and Chris.
Repeat after me. I
I
Darrell O. Hendricks
Darrell O. Hendricks
do solemnly swear and affirm
Do solemnly swear and affirm
that I will support
That I will support
obey and defend
Obey and defend
the Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of this Commonwealth
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth
and that I will discharge
And that I will discharge
the duties of my office
The duties of my office
of councilperson of the city of Allentown
Of councilperson of the city of Allentown
with fidelity
With fidelity.
All right, so next, we have councilwoman Cynthia Motta, who also won election and is gonna be reefered. And she will be, the oath is gonna be given by also Judge David House Jr.
Yeah, a couple of years ago, he married me.
He also married you.
Oh, yes.
He's not gonna marry you today.
No, not today.
And the family of Councilwoman Motta would like to come up.
I
I
Cynthia Motta
Cynthia Motta
do solemnly affirm
Do solemnly affirm
that I will support
That I will support
obey and defend
Obey and defend
the Constitution of the United States
Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of this Commonwealth
And the Constitution
and the Constitution of this Commonwealth
and the Constitution of this Commonwealth
and that I will
And that I will
discharge the duties
Discharge the duties
of my office of councilperson
Of my office of councilperson
for the city of Allentown, Pennsylvania
For the city of Allentown, Pennsylvania
with fidelity
With fidelity.
I didn't really marry her. I did the service. This man married her. This man did.
Who did you marry?
Okay, congratulations. And now we're going to have a councilman-elect, Courtney Robinson. Please come forward. He'll be swearing by the honorable Judge Michael DeMore, who was a former councilman. Say the word again what I'm saying.
I Courtney Robinson.
I Courtney Robinson.
Do solemnly affirm
Do solemnly affirm
that I will support, obey, and defend
that I will support, obey, and defend
the Constitution of the United States
the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of this Commonwealth
and the Constitution of this Commonwealth
and that I will discharge the duties of my office
and that I will discharge the duties of my office
councilperson of the city of Allentown
of councilperson of the city of Allentown
with fidelity
with fidelity. Thank you, Dave.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Great.
Congratulations, councilmen.
And you have a choice or you already have it there? Okay. I don't know, not too much talking over here. I don't know about that. You're gonna have to be careful that way. Congratulations. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we've got another in-house previous former police officer, Ed Zuko. And if you'd come forward, please.
I wanted to say that my family couldn't be here tonight because my children had homework to do and I thought that was a little more boring. But we never leave home without a psychic. This is Daniela Pacheco, a fifth grader at Jefferson Elementary where I work. She's going to my Bible home.
Ready, Eddie?
I'm ready.
Okay. Please repeat after me. I Ed Zuko
I Ed Zuko
do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear
that I will support, obey, and defend
Support, obey, and defend
the Constitution of the United States
the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of this Commonwealth
and the Constitution of this Commonwealth
and that I will discharge the duties
that I will discharge the duties
of my office of councilperson
of my office of councilperson
of the city of Allentown, Pennsylvania
of the city of Allentown, Pennsylvania
with fidelity
with fidelity.
Congratulations, councilmen. You can sit right next to me over there. Keep your line. All right. So those are our council members. And what we're gonna do now is we've got a couple remarks. So if anybody in council, those of us who were swearing. Oh, one second. Yes, almost forgot. I just don't get it. All right, so Jeff, Jeff Pleiser would be the, he's also an electrofishing. He would be
Yes, yes.
He would be honored by the honorable Judge DeMore.
Please raise your hand, sir. I Jeff Pleiser
I Jeff Pleiser
do solemnly affirm
Do solemnly affirm
that I will support, obey, and defend
that I will support, obey, and defend
the Constitution of the United States
the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of this Commonwealth
and the Constitution of this Commonwealth
and I will discharge the duties of my office
and I will discharge the duties of my office
of comptroller of the city of Allentown, Pennsylvania
of comptroller of the city of Allentown, Pennsylvania
with fidelity
with fidelity.
Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Pleiser. And thank you to all the honorable judges that were here today.
Thank you.
All right, so Mr. Pleiser, would you like to say a couple remarks?
Thank you, Mr. Guridi. I have some very, very brief remarks this evening. As always, I'd like to thank my family for supporting me in public service all these years. I was first elected in 1999, so it's been a while. I'd also like to thank Allentown citizens for electing me and giving me the privilege and the honor of serving them.
Yes.
I'd also like to thank council for appointing me comptroller almost two years ago. Since then, I've worked every day to repay that trust and faith that you placed in me. Now, over the next two years, the comptroller's office will continue on the path started when I was appointed in February 2016. We will strive for even greater transparency of the city's finances. In 2017, we began to gain an understanding of city departmental budgeting and even more importantly, their spending patterns. That work will continue this year and hopefully will show some results for the 2019 budget. Finally, progress the comptroller's office is able to make is largely due to my dedicated staff and to the cooperation of all city departments. Thank you very much.
Now we go back to the remarks. And I'd like to invite Mayor Polatski to like to say a couple remarks. Please come up.
Thank you, Mr. Guridi. I'm gonna give you a microphone here. You know, I thought about what I was gonna say tonight. And what I really wanted to do is address some of the real concerns that we have, I think, on the horizon as a city. And we've come a long way. When you look at what we've accomplished here over the many years here in the city of Allentown. Somebody said that it couldn't be done, yet here we are. Today, we are a new city, a growing city, one that's in the midst of almost daily transformation. All you have to do is drive down the streets and get caught in traffic. And you see the transformation that's literally taking place. We're a city of proud families and neighborhoods with big hearts. We're filled with diversity, with energy, and with hope. We are a city that has put aside limitations and really is embracing possibilities. To our newly returning members, the city council and the city comptroller, I'm looking forward to working with both of you, both individually and collectively in the coming term. Now that this long, and I say very, very long, flawed election process is over and we're no longer counting ballots, we can start counting what nites us. And that's the causes that we believe in, the challenges that we tackle together as a community. And we're not always gonna agree on how that should be done or how to get there. But we will agree on the basic premise of making Allentown a better place to live for our residents, a better place to work, a new business, and a better place to play for those who visit our city. And this is without a doubt, I think, probably one of the most difficult times in our nation's history to govern a city. Cities across the country are being attacked and assaulted on almost every single level. This is what you come into. Major cuts in funding for services, unfunded mandates and restrictions on how we are able to govern ourselves make an already difficult job even more difficult. In fact, in many ways, it makes it almost impossible. We also find ourselves in a troubling time, both in our country and our state. There's a new kind of venom that has affected our politics. In Washington, there's no appetite for compromise, no interest in working together for the good of the American people. The other, as they are called, is the competition. Someone always has to be beaten and working together and working with others is almost an impossibility. In Harrisburg, things aren't much better. At times, our representatives value their primary electorate, above all else. And so they cater to the extremes of their gerrymandered districts. And all you have to do is look at a map of the state of Pennsylvania, and you can see that. Either you are with me or against me. The other is not to be trusted. It has all created a type of boogeyman politics motivated by unfounded fears and discrimination against our most vulnerable citizens. But I want all our residents to know, and I know that you all agree with me, when I say this, rest assured, danger doesn't lurk in public restrooms. Our Latinos brothers and sisters are not criminals. Our Syrian brothers and sisters and Middle Eastern immigrants are not terrorists. And our local police officers have far more important things to do than act as immigration agents. In these troubling times, I believe that the way we conduct ourselves as leaders of major American cities is being looked upon like never before. Cities like ours are leading the way in areas of human rights, economic development, job creation, infrastructure improvements, and the environment. We, all of us collectively, the elected leaders of municipal government are closest to the voters and the taxpayers. We are the ones that have the most direct daily impact on our constituents' quality of life. The world is starting to understand this and is at the local level that we're progress, true progress, in cities like ours. That's where progress is being made. It is at the local level where we keep people safe and create jobs and build opportunities. And I believe that this government collectively, you as city council, the administration, working together, we will rise to meet the challenges on the horizon. If, and it's a big if, we all work together. If we embrace those that aren't like us and have different thoughts than us, if we lead by showing tolerance and equality and respect for the other, nothing will be impossible for this city. We will radiate a new politic, a politic that will attract individuals and businesses from all over our state and country that come and invest and live in our city. We will expand opportunity so that it reaches every person in every corner of our city. We will protect and grow a sense of community for it is Allentown's greatest source of strength. And we will ensure equality for all, no matter your age, your race, your religion, or your sexual orientation. Together, we will create a new Allentown, one that is a hub of opportunity, community, and equality for all. Now, these are big goals, as you know. But President Lincoln once said, "The best thing about the future is that it comes one day at a time." The story of Allentown shows that by working together, we can overcome challenges. Through our collective hard work, Allentown has a bright future. Together, we have made tremendous strides in a number of areas. And together, we've changed challenges into opportunities and have laid a solid footing for a new future for the city. Do we still have a way to go? Absolutely. Will we gonna have setbacks in this process? Absolutely. But working together, we will continue to rebuild our economy. We're gonna set new foundations for our city. I, like you, I'm sure, am inspired every day by the people of the city, by your hopes, by their dreams, and by their determination. And we need to listen to them. And we will keep listening to them. And through our collective hard work together, we will continue on a path for a better Allentown. So let us continue to work together. Let us put aside this boogeyman politics. Let us put aside the rhetoric that exists in our politic on a national and state level. Let it not happen here. All of you, I know, want to come away and leave your terms here, leaving the city better than when you came in. That's my desire too. Let's work together to make a better Allentown. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And at this point, we would make remarks for new council members, including those of us who got reelected. So because my name is Guridi, I All right, so say it again. Just making brief remarks personally. God forgive me the opportunity to serve this city. As some of you know, I was born in a different country. I really was not born with a silver spoon. But I always had something to eat. I always had enough to eat. And my grandfather said, whenever I finished, even if I was hungry, he said, "You had enough to eat." So he reaffirmed that. So regardless, I'd like to just thank my family for their support. And to all the meetings I go to for the last twenty, well, seventeen years here, but I went to meetings before the city council. I used to come to the meetings anyway. So thank you for your support and for being with me so many hours. I really appreciate it. And I'd like to say thank you to my colleagues as well in council for putting up with me. And sometimes I think I talk too much and too loud. But so I try to make it short. I'd like to also thank the citizens of Allentown, who are the voters. And they've been, they've seen that I've been transparent as much as I can in the city. I started the issue. I learned. And I tried to make my decision to serve the greater good for the citizens of Allentown. And I'd like to just say happy new year. I hope you have a wonderful new year. And keep showing me something. I have no idea what it is.
The media communications.
Of the media. The media. Thank the media. I thank the media for all their support. That's why I'm here and everybody else.
That was on the newspaper.
That's a pretty much it. So thank you all. And I'd like to just invite you to come to city council meetings. They are usually there the first and third Wednesday of the month. The meeting starts at seven o'clock. However, we usually have committee meetings. Sometimes they start at five thirty, six o'clock. It's in the newspaper. So it's in our website, which is www-allentownpa.gov. And we have our agenda there. Please become aware of what we're doing because we're serving you, the citizens. And you can call us at any time. You can go into the city. You can call our wonderful city clerk and get to know what your city is and what we're doing. And you know, today with the social media, sometimes we see things that people have no idea what we do. And sometimes we respond to it. But I think it's our responsibility to make sure that we vote, that we bring our friends and family to vote. And that's where you're gonna get to represent you. So thank you very much. And next, I'd like to ask Mr. Hendricks to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Guridi. First and foremost, I want to thank my colleagues on council for their input and cooperation throughout the past year. I also want to thank Mike and Tawana for all their support. I also want to welcome our newest members, Ed Zuko and Courtney Robinson. And I look forward to working with you both. You truly do have some big shoes to fill. But not only you both, as I do, I have no doubt that you will get up to the task. I most sincerely offer thanks and appreciation to my wife, my sons, and all the citizens of our great city for the support they have shown to me during the past year. A year of many challenges, but also a year of many accomplishments. I was greatly concerned entering the May primary as I was in the number nine and last ballot position. Ultimately, humbled to finish number one in both the spring primary and general election this past fall. I have always considered myself to be a public servant and not a politician, as it is the only vocation I have known for the past forty-two years. I also want to add my appreciation for all the members of the city's workforce who have diligently served the citizens of our city and continue to serve with a high level of professionalism. And of course, I would be remiss not to add my special thanks for my brothers and sisters in blue and our firefighters for the great job they do on a daily basis protecting us all. As a new year has arrived and new challenges emerge, we must endeavor to continue a path of open, honest, and transparent governance
Yes.
through our legislative responsibilities while providing oversight through the system of checks and balances, some of which were recently enacted. I am most proud to pledge to you that over the next four years, I will continue to perform my duties with honor, integrity, and unquestionable resolve while we continue to elevate Allentown to its destiny as the crown jewel of the Lehigh Valley. May you all experience a great 2018. Thank you very much.
And next, we will have Ms. Motta.
Thank you, Mr. Guridi. Greetings. Thank you all for attending this evening. First and foremost, I want to thank God for this opportunity to serve this wonderful city. To my family, we are family of service. We, as a family, are used to standing in the gap for those in our community when we see that there's a need to be fulfilled. In swearing in this evening, I want to thank my family for their continued support and understanding as I continue to serve Allentown as the city councilwoman. This evening is the beginning of a third term for me. This evening is the beginning of a third term for me. Unbelievable, third term. God is great. As a mother, as a mother and a businesswoman, I must say that the challenges of public service are many. But after witnessing the growth and direction of our city has taken, I am ready to continue to serve alongside this body of elected leaders. To my peers, as we enter another season of creating change, I want you to remember that my decisions as an elected leader will be to benefit all Allentonians. As I agree and disagree with you, I ask that you as well consider the voices of all newcomers and of those whose voices aren't always heard. To my electorate, my promise and commitment is to listen and consider your voices that are sometimes ignored. You can count that I will challenge any legislation. Again, I will challenge any legislation that is poorly designed and poses undue and unequal hardship. I will make sure your vote for me was a vote for equal and fair representation. I look forward to again being a servant to your needs, a servant who is easily accessible, and a servant who responds when called upon. Again, thank you for coming out tonight. You can count on me being your voice in this chamber once again ensuring we become a city where all are welcome and all are represented. Thank you, Ms. Tawana, and thank you, Mr. Hammond, all your support and help. And thank you all. God bless you.
Thank you. And next, we're gonna have our newly elected council members. And that'll be Courtney Robinson and Ed Zuko.
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you for leading the meeting. To you, Mr. President, to my fellow members of council, Mayor Polatsky, the Controller, Pleasure, all of you in the audience. Thank you. This is a humbling experience, to say the least. And I can only say that I will do my utmost to do this job well and to represent what I think the best way forward for our city is. I just have a few remarks that I put together that I'd like to thank a few people first and foremost. First of all, I'd like to thank Dr. McGuire and Council President O'Connell for their service over the years. They have shown us a good way to lead. And they've also shown us what dedication to community really can mean in a city. And for that, I'd like to thank you both. I would also like to thank my opponent in the general election, former Councilman Hirschman. He dedicated a better part of his adult life to serving all of us and to trying to do what he felt was best for the city. And he never hesitates to stand up and be counted as someone who's still willing to put his part in. We are a richer and a better city for people who stand up in that way. And I'd like to thank him for all his years of service as well. The person that I need to thank the most is Stephanie Cucker. Stephanie, without you, I would not be sitting here. Your support over the last two years leading up to this has been absolutely the most important thing that I could have had. And I will never be able to thank you enough for that. I also would like to thank my mother Barbara and her partner Tim for all their support. My mother instilled in me at a very young age a sense of civic duty and responsibility. And I try to live up to that every day. I also want to thank Stephanie's family for all their help throughout the campaign and everything. I would like to thank my campaign chair, Mayor Cuartez, who was unavailable to be here tonight, and my campaign treasurer, Carmen Bell, for all of her work. And, you know, as Council President O'Connell said in his remarks about us, I've had the benefit of working with some very committed and dedicated public servants over the years. And their example is something that I truly attempt to aspire to. So for their support and friendship over the years, I would just like to say thank you to former state representative Jennifer Mann, state representatives Peter Schweyer and Mike Schlossberg, and former member of council and district judge Mike DeMore. I just have to say that being sworn in by Judge DeMore was very important to me. And that meant quite a deal. And thank you for that, Mike. I had a number of people who helped me get here, and to each of you, thank you. People like Stephanie McDonald and Radwan Jerush and everyone from the Syrian-American Center. Without your support, I would not be here. There's someone else that I want to mention specifically because not only was he supportive, but he is one of the many people that we are fortunate to have in this city who quietly, every day, does whatever they can to try and help. And that is Dan Blunt. I have had the privilege of attending for the past several years an event that Dan puts on along with Meli Canales called Cops Meet Block. And for those of you who have not attended this program, I highly recommend that you do. It's an amazing opportunity to see children from Center City, Allentown, and Allentown police officers playing a game of basketball together, getting to know each other, getting to trust each other, and building communication. And that communication is something that's not only important for our children, that communication is something we need for all of our citizens. And that's something that we need to work as a body and as a city government entirely to reestablish, is firm communication. And that doesn't just mean us going out and talking to people and telling them what's going on, but more importantly, listening to what citizens in every neighborhood, in every block of this city have to say. This is not only our city, it's your city. It's a city for all of us, and we need to work towards that again. You know, we have the best police and fire department and emergency medical service, I would say, in Pennsylvania. But they are only as good as the streets that they drive on. Our parks are an amazing resource, but they're only as strong as the neighborhoods they reside in. Every neighborhood in this city has value, and more importantly, every citizen in this city has value and has the ability to contribute. And we must work every day towards realizing that potential. As all of you know, one of my most important issues was code enforcement and housing. And I think that we not only need to devote resources to that, but we need to be innovative in how we solve the problem. Because fixing a problem property on the block is the surest way to help keep a neighborhood alive or to resurrect it. And that's gonna be an important thing as we move forward in 2018, is working on repairing our housing stock. The diversity in our city is something that makes us strong. A diverse culture and exposure to a diverse culture is what opens us up to the potential of new ideas and new ways to solve problems. And every day, we must celebrate that diversity, strengthen that diversity, and promote that diversity. So I think that all of us can agree that working to make sure that every citizen in the city of Allentown feels as if their government not just cares about them, but listens to them. If we can move towards that goal over the next two years, then no matter what the outcome, I think we can all be proud and know that we've succeeded at something. I just want to say, as a final remark, those who know me know that I am a bit of a history buff. And I would be remiss with the fact that there is a new biography out about Sir Winston Churchill not to end on a quote from Sir Winston. So I would simply say to all of you, to my fellow members of council, to the citizens of Allentown, that for the next two years, the only thing that I have to offer is blood, toil, tears, and sweat to work towards these goals. Thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Robinson. And now, we go to Councilman Ed Zuko.
A couple remarks. Thank you. There we go. Alright, well, before I make my remarks, I want to thank Mr. O'Connell and Mr. McGuire, probably two of the finest people that have ever stood up here. They've done more, but give a hundred percent for you people, not for themselves, but for you people. And I also want to say that now that I'm officially sworn in, I'll have the Eddie Bears on sale for $10 plus shipping and handling. I would like to thank my wife and my children. This is the second election I've been through. Many hours, many, many hours, a couple pairs of shoes. But, you know, in the end, it's the ultimate to be up here. I'm very honored. I want to thank you, the citizens, for electing me. Anyone that knows me knows that my philosophy and work ethic is second to none. I believe that we have a serious public safety issue. I'm going to make some recommendations in the future on how to correct that based on some of the facts that I've experienced through my years as a police officer in their city. I would also like to give a shout out to Corporal Seth Kelly from the Pennsylvania State Police. He is recovering from an almost near fatal encounter. And the reason I say that is because in 2006, and some of you folks may not remember this, but one of our own, Andy Becky, experienced the same thing. And had it not been for our EMS, Andy probably would not be here. So I was so happy to see that we got two more positions in the budget for two more paramedics. And they are the best in this state as far as I'm concerned. And Andy would probably have to agree with me. Also, anybody that knows me knows that I don't take very many things at face value. I ask questions. I try to initiate conversation. I try to, I am very taffle when I do that because I want to see what the person's true answer is because that tells you a lot about the person. I think that the future of our city is positive. I believe that we can do a lot together. I believe my members and colleagues on city council are in the right frame of mind. And I want to tell you that I will do the very best job that you have elected me to do. And this is probably only gonna be a one-